Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the May 16th meeting of the Scioto Township Planning Commission. And we are meeting in a hybrid format. And I'll call the meeting to order at 7:01, and roll call, please. Secretary Zhang.
Okay. Commissioner Sharma.
President.
President.
Commissioner Hyde.
Present.
Commissioner Zhang.
Present.
Commissioner Culbertson.
Present.
Okay, we have a quorum, and then the next item of business is adoption of the agenda. Does anyone have any additions or revisions to the posted agenda?
I do not.
Seeing none, do I have a motion to approve? Okay. Moved by Commissioner Hyde, supported by Commissioner Sharma. And all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? All right, we're proceeding with the posted agenda. Communications and correspondence, there was in the packet, the correspondence that we have received to date. Has anyone had any additional correspondence since the upload? All right, none. We have no presentations this evening, so we are going to move to public comment. And I just wanted to give some guidance on public comment. We don't have the sign-up sheets. Will you put those out? Secretary Zhang. Those wishing to address the Planning Commission on any item, we do not have any public hearings this evening, so this is the sole opportunity for folks to comment and address the Planning Commission. And we request that you keep your comments to three minutes unless you're representing an organization, and then it will be five minutes. If you are here representing a project, the applicant will have an opportunity to introduce the project at the time we take your project up for the agenda. So with that, I'll open public comment at 7:04. We'll start with anyone in the room that would like to address the Planning Commission, and then we'll move to the online folks. Okay, seeing none present, then we'll move on to online.
And we do have five people in attendance this evening. Online, if anyone online would like to participate in the meeting, please raise your virtual hand, and we will call them in. I'll give you a net here to raise your virtual hand. At this point, none of the five folks online are raising their hand.
All right. Then I'll entertain a motion to close public comment. Moved by Commissioner Hyde. Support by Commissioner Sharma. Any further discussion?
None.
Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? All right, public comment is closed at 7:05. Then we move on to Wolverine Pickleball. So if the applicant would like to come forward, and we'll, you can introduce it and go over any details that you'd like, and then we'll go and hear from our planning consultant, engineering consultant, questions, and then discussion.
I'm Kristi Howden. I am one of the co-owners of Wolverine Pickleball, and we are excited to bring an enhanced pickleball destination to Scioto Township. We've been operating currently out of a warehouse, and it's been going great, and we look to expand and build a facility for pickleball off of Medi Drive, and have a completely inclusive environment with additional pickleball courts, a standard restaurant bar setup, so we'll be seeking a liquor license, and we'll have outdoor recreation for bocce and sand volleyball to even out our revenues throughout the year. That's kind of just of it.
Yeah, are there any, are there any comments, review comments, or anything that you want to address at this point? From? Hand looked at your questions. What? All right, we'll just make questions. All right. Well, then, we'll go ahead and move to Doug for planning.
Okay. I'm not sure, I've been told to turn this mic on, so I'm not sure which one's working actually. Sit this down. Okay. Doug Lewant, Township Planner. For those watching from home, I'm the one in the background. So this is a project that the Planning Commission should be pretty familiar with, because we've seen Kristi a couple times before, at least twice before, actually, probably three times before. But this particular site off of Medi Drive, if you remember, was previously zoned industrial, so the applicant had to go through a rezoning to bring it to C4 Composite Commercial, because that is a designation that allows both indoor recreation, outdoor recreation, and restaurant facility. As a part of that rezoning, the applicant proposed it as a conditional rezoning, in that they voluntarily restricted themselves to take out some uses that might, the township might otherwise find objectionable. Things like outdoor contractors' storage yards and things like that, while leaving primarily the uses that they wanted to allow. After conditional rezoning, because the restaurant and one of the commercial recreations was a conditional land use, the applicant went through a conditional land use, if you remember, there's a public hearing on that. That conditional land use was permitted by the township, and now we're in the final home stretch for site plan approval. So we should be pretty comfortable, you know, pretty comfortable with what the applicant's proposing, understand what they're proposing, because we've been talking about it for a while. And even before that, the applicant, as she mentioned, proposed a similar use in a warehouse building that also had to go through special land use approval from Scioto Township about two years ago, year and a half, two years ago. So, Kristi Howden is one of our frequent flyers, so welcome back. So our report is strictly on the site plan. The use has been allowed by both, recommended for the Planning Commission and Scioto Township Board, recommend, or approved the conditional land use. And so now we are at the site plan stage. As you can see from our review comments, we'll, I'll just kind of go over the items to be addressed, and if anyone has any questions or comments, I'll try to address those. If you'll see from page three of our report, when we start to talk about how the site, how the building's going to sit on the piece of property, when we talk about setbacks, front setback, side, rear, building height, all that sort of thing, they meet all of those standards with the exception of maximum lot coverage. In maximum lot coverage, they're slightly over, just slightly, six tenths of one percent over. They may go up to 20%, so the standard is 15% maximum lot coverage, they may go up to 20% lot coverage. But to do that, they have to incorporate two stormwater best management practices, and we defer to Township Engineer, OHM, to verify those best management practices to get the slightly larger floor air coverage. And that, that's the only kind of, we call them bulk requirements, the only area width height setback issue where there's, where there's a problem. If you're familiar with the site, it's just behind the Ann Arbor Arms site, I should say north of the Ann Arbor Arms site, off Medi Drive. If you've driven past the site, you'll notice that it's, it's, it's pretty much an open grassy field. There's not a lot of significant natural features on site. There is one small wetland in the northwest corner of the site. The applicant is not proposing to encroach or touch that wetland at all, that's remaining as is. So, other than the existing wetland that the applicant is not proposing, the site where development is proposed is a, is pretty much an open grassy field. In association with that wetland, as you can see on page four of our report, there are some trees, so there's a little bit of a wooded wetland. However, as I said, that area is not proposed to be impacted by the, by the proposal. So on page five of our report, we talk about parking and loading. We have a calculation of 139 spaces being required for all of the uses that the applicant is proposing. We calculated based on the Township zoning ordinance with regard to courts, you know, similar to tennis courts, that sort of thing. So we get up to a requirement of 139 required parking spaces. The applicant is proposing 132 parking spaces. So this is one of those areas of the zoning ordinance that the Planning Commission has some discretion. We've provided some commentary on, on the parking, and while we use tennis courts kind of as our base and, and other standards, as we kind of broke down their floor plan, there's really no specific parking standard in our zoning ordinance for something like pickleball courts, because it's such a new kind of phenomenon within, within the area with really, I guess, across the country. So our number is, could be argued that it's based on something slightly different than what the applicant is proposing, but that's all we have to go by. So we're indicating 139 spaces are required, the applicant's proposing 132. As I was starting to say, this is one of those areas that the Planning Commission has some discretion to allow more or less parking without having to send this request to the zoning board of appeals. So the applicant has, or excuse me, the Planning Commission has the ability, based on input from the applicant, to alter the parking standards either up or down. So sometimes we see an applicant comes in with more parking than we allow, and which we don't want to. It's really normally the desire of the township to reduce impervious surfaces, to reduce stormwater impacts and things like that. In this case, the applicant is proposing, you know, seven spaces less than what we've calculated, and we will, we will leave this for a discussion point of the Planning Commission. When I'm done with our report, that perhaps the applicant can address the Planning Commission on why they believe that number of spaces works for their particular use. With regard to site access and circulation, they're proposing a single driveway cut on Medi Drive. There's nothing particularly significant about that or controversial, and we believe that circuit, the site access is, is fine. We indicate that, you know, we will need some review from the fire department, which I think they have done, and the Township Engineer, as well as the road commission for Washtenaw County. With regard to safety paths, there's no proposed or planned safety path on Medi Drive. This lot has no frontage on Jackson Road or any other road. It's, Medi Drive's a cul-de-sac, industrial subdivision for the most part, and there's no plan for safety paths as contained in the non-motorized plan for Scioto Township. So we have no comments there. With regard to landscaping, there are a few minor landscaping issues that the applicant will have to address prior to moving on to the next stage. Probably the most, a lot of these are just technical issues that can be easily addressed. Probably one of the more significant ones is they have to provide a masonry dumpster enclosure, rather than a kind of a, just a typical kind of wood enclosure. With regard to lighting, the lighting plan meets ordinance standards. There's no sign being proposed for this request, so signs are typically applied for after site plan approval. We do like to see them on the site plan, so perhaps the applicant can address what they're proposing for signs for this project. And we do indicate it, typically it's nice for the Planning Commission to see a color rendering of the site, to see what we're, see what we're getting, what's being proposed. And we have nine items to be addressed to the satisfaction of the Planning Commission on our site plan review. None of these items, you know, you'll, you'll see are what I would call showstopper issues. You know, none of these items are, you know, things that will change the use or alter the location of the building, or alter the location of the driveway access points. I mean, our, our biggest concerns were, you know, well, the biggest concern is number of parking spaces, so the Planning Commission does have to discuss that. The other is, you know, correcting the landscaping, you know, tweaking the landscaping calculations contained in the landscaping plan, which is a technical issue, which doesn't affect any part of the plan at all, and then making a few other minor changes. And then, of course, getting outside agency permits, road commission, that sort of thing. In fact, the applicant may want to address us and where they're at with the outside agency approvals. If they've come in, great, maybe they can mention that, or let us know where they're at with that, let us know where they're at in that process. So with that, I, we, well, while we say there's nine items to be addressed to the satisfaction of the Planning Commission, I think these are items that we can, you know, aside from the seven parking spaces, which is at the discretion of the Planning Commission, we believe that these items can be addressed without a lot of issue or trouble between now and the time that this goes to the Township Board. So we would be, we'd be happy to recommend approval of this project, subject to the items in our review. And that is our report.
Thank you. Why don't we go ahead and hear OHM's report, and then we can entertain questions and some of your responses to the concerns? Right?
All right. Good evening. We also recommended approval, similar to Doug, our comments were also not showstopping comments and can still be addressed between now and final approval. One of them was regarding the proposed stormwater management system. We're interested in having the applicant provide an executed maintenance agreement for the system, and we included an example with our letter for the applicant's benefit. That's just for any future maintenance or issues that come up later on down the road. And then our other comment was to relocate a single tree away from the proposed storm sewer, just to prevent any future issues. Other than that, our other comments are provided for detailed engineering and do not affect our approval at this time, so I can answer any other questions you've got for me, but we are good with this project moving forward as well.
Okay, thank you very much. So I'll open it up to Planning Commissioners for comments and questions. I have some notes from Jackie who couldn't be here tonight, and she had a couple of Just talking, she had a concern about it being very flat and the idea of the stormwater going over the parking lot, and, you know, how will it be, how will it be absorbed? Can you talk a little bit more in specific about that? And then the plant list includes a Miscanthus sinensis variety, which is known as an invasive species, and the request is to, since the proximity to the preserves, could that be replaced with a non-invasive species? Those were two comments that Jackie had. And pardon me if I could not pronounce the Latin. I'll be glad to spell it. So those were two comments. And Commissioner Hyde?
Yes, I too was curious about the water flow, or the stormwater flow over the parking lot, and I guess a question for OHM is, is this something that has been handled this way before? And has it worked out in other instances?
Do you want me to answer that now?
Sure.
To my knowledge, it has worked out in the past. We did recommend a different alternative to prevent the sheet flowing over the parking lot, and that's part of why we included the comment for the maintenance agreement, just to help prevent any issues coming up in the future. But there shouldn't be any major concerns with it. We reviewed everything that they've provided so far, and it all checks out, but that maintenance agreement will kind of give some leeway on making sure that things get fixed if they need to be.
Thank you.
Yeah, just piggybacking on that, just sometimes when you sheet flow over a parking lot, there are issues in the wintertime, and that might be a...
No water.
Yeah, well, yeah, with, yeah. Any other questions from other commissioners?
I did have some, but they may not be related to, you know, the landscaping, the stormwater, but is, is there a typo? Looking at the zoning site data on the first page of the site plan, it says that it's required for seven bicycle parking spaces, and it says provided six. It may just be a typo, but if it's short a space, I don't think it'd be too difficult to probably put a bicycle hoop, or just to meet those bicycle parking on site.
I think it, I think we rounded up to seven. It came to like six point something, but yeah, we can, we could very easily add another bike, yeah.
And then, if I'm looking at this correctly, you're short seven parking spaces, is there any, are there any small car parking spaces on site?
We have not provided any small car parking spaces.
Is there any opportunity then to maybe add small car parking spaces and shrink it down, so you could, you may be able to meet those seven spaces with 139 out there, from a, probably it's a nine by 18 space down to a, you know, a 16 by eight type space, and that may actually meet the parking?
We could look at that, if you're interested in doing some compact parking spaces. We probably wouldn't change the length, because they would have to fit into a bay that we already have, but we could narrow some of them up.
Yeah, I think that...
Especially the ones that are around the radius, that end up being kind of oversized anyway, yeah.
And then, I guess one of my final questions, because I know we don't know much about volleyball, bocce ball, and pickleball. Is there a place, if you are in fact exceeding the parking, is there any areas for overflow parking? Is, I don't know if I asked at the last meeting, is, does Medi Drive allow for parking along the drive?
I would say no to that. I think you could park along it, but I don't think it's designed to have parking spaces along the street. I will say that some things to take in consideration when we're talking about the parking is that we've assumed everyone coming to play pickleball will be driving themselves, and I believe what Kristi would tell you from experience is lots of times, people drive together. You have a husband and a wife, or friends, not everyone drives by themselves. And the other thing to take in, to consideration is that the volleyball and the bocce ball will be seasonal, so, you know, depending on the weather.
Right.
It depends on how much they get used as well. So I think we feel like, I mean, I know they feel like they have plenty of parking for what they're trying to accommodate here. There is, you know, there's 12 courts.
12 pickleball courts. We, I mean, we're managing right now eight pickleball courts, it's very limited parking, and we're managing that by people carpooling together. And we're also staggering time, so if we ever had an issue, we would stagger time so that we could keep people moving, so it wouldn't be like doubling up, like people coming in before people have left. We're also getting to know our neighbors and trying to work out any arrangements with them if we needed additional parking in case of a random tournament or something like that, we would definitely take that into consideration. But the reason we have the bocce and the sand volleyball is to compensate for the dip in pickleball that is normally experienced in summertime, so that would, people would come for bocce and sand volleyball, but not so much for pickleball, and then in the wintertime there'd be no sand volleyball or bocce, so it kind of balances out with our plan with the facility.
So with the existing, so the existing pickleball courts, you haven't had any parking issues then?
We have, we're, we are, we're limited to only about 20 parking spots right now, so it's very tiny for having the four courts that we had, and so it's, it's been a challenge, but we've tried to manage that with our neighbors and, but by staggering time, so that people are leaving and there's a buffer before more people come in, so they can leave. So if we have, you know, 20 spots, really for eight courts that we have right now, and we can manage, I think this will be great to, because people will, you know, fill it up, we'll, we'll have the lounge area for them to linger a little bit, we'll have enough buffer.
So I would just like to stress, they have eight courts and 20 spots, and they're making it work, and they're only going to have 12 courts.
Right.
And 130 some spots now. So I think, you know, there's a comfort level, that we have plenty of parking, yeah.
What are you thinking of your employee, the typical peak employee number? Oh, it'll only be like five employees. It doesn't take very many employees right now, it's, it's one to manage eight courts. Yeah, so if you take 12 courts, times four, double it, add five employees, you know, you're at about 111 spaces, and, you know, assume there's some area free that may not be available or something, so the, I'm pretty comfortable with the 132, I think. And I think one of the things you could do is if you, I don't know if you want to consider, you know, nearing some of those spaces, you know, for compact, just to, you know, get, get closer if you can, and that always helps, that'll help with tournaments too, that you just have those, so that might be...
So is, is pickleball more of a winter sport then? Do people usually play more in the colder...
Yes, I mean, yes. Well, people play inside in the wintertime, they're going to go maybe outside, but also they have other activities. They, you know, they'll start playing golf and vacations and everything else. But pickleball in the winter really just, we're, we're the premier facility to play. We have people who drive, you know, over an hour away to come play at our place, just because it's such a great, you know, setup that we have, even though it's in a bare-bones warehouse, and this'll be just amazing. Commissioner Sharma, did you have any other, any questions, or?
No, I was trying, yeah, I think you asked a question, but let's just go with the calculation again. You said 12 courts, four per court, that's 48.
And then you double it because of changeover.
Changeover, that's 96 plus five employees.
Yep.
101 versus 130 spots.
Yeah, okay, 101. So much for my addition.
So, but apart from these 12 courts, there is no other activity in the, in your location, I guess?
Not in the wintertime. In summertime, we do bocce and sand volleyball, but then the pickleball goes down.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
All right. Thank you.
And any other questions? Yeah. So, yeah, so I think, so the bike, I want to go back and make sure we're looking at the bike spaces correctly, is that... Because it, it looked like from the report, there were six required and six provided.
I was, yeah, that's what I see.
In the, in the report.
So if you look on the actual site plan...
Yeah, it has a different one, seven and six.
I don't really caught it, because I was looking at the parking...
Yeah, oh, one per 20 cars, yeah. So if we add, oh, I know what it is, it's because this is at 139 and 132, so if you increase your total parking, you're going to need to increase your bike space.
You're right, you're right. It's based on cars and, yeah.
Yeah, right, that's what it is.
I see. If we don't, if we don't increase the number of car spaces, we don't need to increase the bikes.
Yeah, so that would be, I mean, for final, you know, the final site plan approval, if you add more spaces, then you'd have to add the bike, so, yeah.
I don't see any reason why they need to increase it. If you're comfortable, you've been monitoring spaces and usage as tightly as you had to, you've got a pretty good feel for what it's going to take, so...
Especially if it's 101 instead of 111, that's quite a bit in addition to, yeah. Are people ready for a motion?
I am.
Okay.
Write your name.
Yeah, please, Commissioner Hyde.
Okay. For Site Plan 22003 Wolverine Pickleball, Site Plan Approval, based on the information received from the applicant and reflected in the minutes of this meeting, the Planning Commission finds that Site Plan 22003 Wolverine Pickleball meets the criteria for Site Plan Approval pursuant to Section 36180 of the Zoning Ordinance and recommends approval. This is recommended with the following conditions, the concerns noted in the Township Planner's Review dated May 4, 2022, and the concerns noted in the Township Engineer's Review dated 4/28/2022. I don't think we put any more... I don't think we put any more restrictions.
I think we need to state that we, that the parking reduction to 132 spaces is.
Is acceptable.
Is acceptable.
Okay, so be explicit about that.
Right, we have to be explicit about that because it is, we have that leeway. And then I would also like to add that they remove the, they substitute the invasive species listed.
Which one was that again?
Yeah, hang on. It is Miscanthus, M-I-S-C-A-N-T-H-U-S. Sinensis, S-I-N-E-N-S-I-S. Then that would be, then you'd have the option with that motion, you could proceed with 132 and the six bikes, bicycle spaces, or you can also, if you want to narrow some of those spaces up and that a minimum of, we don't want to say that because you don't want.
I guess we could just say we would find 132 acceptable.
All right, and we could say 132 acceptable, 139 maximum. Just so we're not going over the, the criteria with associated bike spaces. Or required bike spaces. Okay. All right, is there a second?
Oh, sorry.
The motion to approve the. The site plan, or the fine, actually recommendation for approval with the following conditions. The Planner's Review, the Township Engineers' Review, that parking of 132 spaces is acceptable with a maximum of 139 and the replacement of the Miscanthus Sinensis. Invasive, invasive species with something that is not invasive. All right, any further discussion? All right, a roll call vote, please.
Okay, Commissioner Hyde. Commissioner Shama.
Yes.
Commissioner Chang, yes. Commissioner Culbertson?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries.
Thank you very much.
I hear a lot about pickleball, I haven't played yet.
A lot over, a ton of fun.
All right, thank you very much. All right, I believe our next applicant is joining us virtually. Yes.
He's on.
He's on.
Hello.
Okay, so Sam Hill, Site Plan Number 22006. Oh, did you get both of their names?
Yes, I did.
Okay, great, thanks. All right, so we'll do the same where you're welcome to present your project and then we'll hear from the planning consultant and the engineering consultant.
Fantastic. Hi, everyone. My name is Michael Bartome. I am a Syo Township resident and one of the owners of Sam Hill. We, Sam Hill is a spacious indoor/outdoor gathering place and restaurant for local friends and families to spend the day enjoying food, drinks, games and entertainment. Our proposal is a redevelopment of part of the asphalt parking lot of the former Standard Bistro site. We're planning a first floor restaurant of 4,800 square feet with minimal interior cosmetic changes. But our site plan is for the outdoor area. We're planning about a 6,000 square foot deck, paver and turf area with various seating options, shade structures and a fully enclosed bar, outdoor bar for service and using some of the existing lawn for games and areas for kids to play. We're super excited about the project. We think it's, will be awesome for the community and for the families and residents in Syo and really bring a lot of vitality to the commercial corridor there on Jackson Road. I'm happy to answer any questions anyone has. I believe you have some renderings in your packet. And we also have our engineer, John Curry, joining via Zoom as well, who can answer any questions from PEA Group.
Okay.
All right, thank you. So I just promoted your engineered panelist. He should be coming on shortly if he needs to chime in here in a moment. So this is a, as was mentioned by the applicant, kind of a reconfiguration of the old Creekside Restaurant that you probably remember that is there on the south side of Jackson Road. The applicant is proposing not only to re-provide the restaurant itself, but to provide this outdoor kind of space, that outdoor restaurant kind of entertainment space that he described. So I won't repeat what he just mentioned. But we looked at this as just kind of an extension to the restaurant use itself. This is not a special land use or a POD or anything. This is, we just looked at this as kind of an accessory to the building itself. And one of the things that will have to happen is there's two properties out there on site, two separate parcels. So those will have to be combined to a single parcel. That should be made a condition of, you know, a condition of approval so that that happens before any, you know, any construction would start on the site. That will help to eliminate any setback issues on the property and that it's just something that should happen. It's under common control, common ownership. It's being used as a single facility, so it should be all a single parcel instead of two separate parcels. As you'll see from the, our area width height and setbacks, the applicant meets all of those items. A variance was granted for the front yard along Jackson to allow for 12 feet instead of the required 50 feet. Other than that, all of the, all of the bulk requirements have been met. With regard to natural resources, really the most, if we're all, I'm sure, familiar with the site, this is not a site that you would think of to be like a naturally, you know, naturally significant parcel, right? There's no, we don't find any major wetlands necessary necessarily. There's no real steep slopes, large landmark trees, you know, the typical kinds of things that we would be concerned with with regard to natural resources, with the exception of a floodplain on the property. So a lot of the western part of the site is contained within a regulated 100-year floodplain. There are certain things that can, you know, be allowed within a floodplain. Certain, I've got those listed on pages three and four of our review. Some of those are kind of recreational type based items. Particularly what, you know, what the state doesn't want in floodplains are habitable structures, so things where people could be or things that could be damaged with the flood. And, you know, the applicant is proposing a lot of outdoor type facilities. However, you know, that being said, some kind of permit, even for those items that the state, you know, Eagle thinks are appropriate within a floodplain, you still need a permit for those things. So the applicant will need a permit from Eagle for work within the floodplain. And perhaps the applicant or the applicant's engineer, when I'm done, can provide some input on where they're at with that process. With regard to traffic impact, there's already a restaurant on the site. There has been for many years. The restaurant had an outdoor deck that was there for many years. So we don't think the introduction of some outdoor seating space and play area for, you know, food area is really going to cause much of a change to the traffic on site. And we also have to recognize, even if it did cause a small increase in traffic, this is on the Jackson Road Boulevard, which is, you know, designed specifically as our major thoroughfare within Syo Township and was designed to handle additional traffic. So we're not really concerned with traffic. We have no item to be addressed there. With regard to essential facilities and services, when I say that, I mean things like water service, sanitary service, stormwater detention, those sorts of things. And those are really under the purview of the Township Engineer, OHM, as well as perhaps the County Water Resources Department. And I know Stacy is with us and she will discuss those items in a few minutes. With regard to building arrangement and site, or building location and site arrangement, we have no real issue with that. The restaurant is not changing, the parking is not changing. They're just providing this new outdoor space. Part of that outdoor space was a parking lot. So we're not necessarily, you know, we're getting a little additional impervious surface, but not much. In fact, it could be argued that there's a reduction. I bet the applicant probably has a calculation for that. But in any event, it there's, it would be, if there is, you know, it's not much, but the applicant can address that when I'm done as well. With regard to parking, there's a requirement based on the size of the restaurant for 72 parking spaces. The applicant is proposing 106, but that is based on 34 gravel overflow spaces that are existing. If you've been out to the site, south of the existing parking lot is a gravel parking lot. And that was, been kind of historically used by the Creekside and, you know, all the residents have been there over the years in real busy times to, you know, allow for overflow parking. So the applicant has indicated to us in our pre-application meetings and so on and so forth that they, you know, they propose to continue that and that that 34, they would like to leave that, those 34 spaces gravel as overflow parking. Now, the zoning ordinance requires all parking that's used on a day-to-day basis to be paved. So if you have parking that's used every day for employees, every day for customers, you know, that sort of thing, it's required to be paved with all the required striping and that sort of thing. The ordinance also allows the planning commission, this is kind of like the number of total parking spaces. This allows the planning commission to allow non-paved parking when it can be shown or proven that it's only, only will receive temporary use and not daily use. The applicant also has to, we also have to talk a little bit about this, you know, gravel parking lot not causing problems with the neighbors with regard to dust and, you know, if it's receiving daily use or truck use, you're going to get dust being kicked up from the gravel parking lot, which we don't want, the neighbors aren't going to want. So that's one, you know, it can't cause problems for the neighbors and it can only be temporary. So from our discussions with the applicant, that's exactly what is being proposed is, you know, 34 temporary parking spaces for overflow only, to be used as it's always been used. And we'll let the applicant discuss that. But that is, that is something that the planning commission will have to, just like the last case where you had to specifically mention if you're going to allow the reduction in parking. This is a case where you're going to have to specifically allow these spaces to be gravel rather than paved. With regard to site access and circulation, primarily the site access circulation is remaining as it always has been. However, as you see our review, we're kind of deferring additional comment to the fire department and if, from their point of view. And sitting in pre-application meetings with the fire department and staff reviewed in meetings with the fire department, it's my impression that they are, that circulation is acceptable to them as well. We have no issue with landscaping. This site did go through, when it was the Creekside, it went through a full site plan review probably five or six years ago, maybe longer now than that. But at that time, it met all outdoor, or all landscape standards and the site, the landscape planned is, still meets landscape standards. We have no, no issue with landscaping. It's pretty much existing stuff. Similar to the lighting, we have no issue with what the applicant is proposing for on their lighting plan. No signage information has been provided. Again, that's something that we like to see on the site plan. However, that's, we review that separately after site plan approval. So just so the applicant knows, if additional signage is proposed, they'll have to submit for that separately. The applicant has provided quite a number of graphics and about what this outdoor patio seating area is going to look like. It's kind of unique what they're proposing. It's sort of some, some container type units that will be converted to covered kind of seating areas and kind of creative use of the facilities. I'm sure the applicant can go into a little more detail with that. But all in all, I think what they're proposing is pretty creative and interesting use of the open space. And we, our only real concern with this project is the floodplain location of those units within any floodplain. And then, of course, the planning commission discussion and determination with regard to the gravel overflow parking rather than paved. So other than that, we only have six items, so relatively minor issues to be addressed. And, you know, subject to planning commission discussion on overflow parking, we would be happy to recommend approval of this project. That is it.
OHM and then we'll ask questions and stuff.
Similar to Doug, we also recommended approval in our review letter from April 28. We had two minor comments remaining. The first one is just noting that there is construction in the floodplain and that a permit will be required. Like Doug mentioned also, hopefully the applicant can give us an update on how that process is going. And then our other comment was to provide a turning template for some parking spaces just to ensure that they're accessible. They appear to be, but we just want to make sure. And then similar to the last letter, all the comments after that, our preliminary detailed engineering can be addressed later and do not affect our recommendation at this time. So we'd also be happy to recommend approval of this one as presented. And I can answer any questions if you've got any.
Okay, thank you. Commissioners?
I have a question for our planner. Doug, on page, hmm, three of your report. I got a little confused and you touched on it tonight. You talked about the 12-foot setback versus 50-foot setback. Has that already had, it lists a variance number here in your chart. That's already been approved prior to this and we're not approving that tonight.
Correct.
Okay, and that's, okay. And then underneath the chart, you have all dimensional and bulk requirements have been met except for the required lot width. Was that a misstatement? Because the required lot width has been met.
Oh.
Was it the setback that you were referring to in your note? I just got a little confused. Because if it was, then I'm not confused.
Yeah.
Lot width.
Yeah, it's not, they're fine with lot width. That must be, that must be a mistake.
Okay, so you're referring to the 12-foot versus, okay. Okay, so you're referring to the 12-foot versus, okay, thank you. Didn't affect any of your summary statements, I just, I was making sure I wasn't missing something.
Right. Commissioner Shama, do you have any questions or?
I may have one question, this may be for actually the engineering. So, is the gravel parking lot, since it's compacted, did they do any stormwater detention for that gravel parking lot?
They did add stormwater for a different portion of the site, but to my knowledge, since the gravel parking was existing, the storm was already accounted for. But they added a small basin for the increase in pervious, or impervious surface.
That wasn't changed.
I think the question is, is it confirmed that this gravel parking lot just didn't appear and not have stormwater detention associated with it?
Prior to this.
Prior to that, yeah.
I'm not sure I follow the question.
So it goes back to kind of when the gravel parking lot appeared and whether it was approved and there was stormwater associated?
I don't know the answer to that. It's been there for a number of years, I, I would have to do a little research to see if it just, if it sort of organically appeared at some point in the past and never received township approval, if that's what you're saying.
I think Mr. Curry has a, perhaps can answer that question.
Yeah, I was just going to say, it has been there for, for many years, just based on aerial photos, and when the administrative site plan went through for the addition, I think when they gained that variance in the front, at that time, no stormwater was required for the site and that gravel lot was existing at the time.
So, the claim is it's an existing condition and, and they don't have to, if it wasn't accounted for before, it doesn't have to be accounted for now, is that sort of correct?
Yeah, well Stacy can, Stacy can kind of verify, but it's my understanding that, generally speaking, the stormwater standards are applicable to new impervious surfaces.
Correct, so that's my understanding as well. And then that's where that additional basin comes into play to account for the new surface that they're proposing.
So, but, is that, but that new basin then is not taking into account the actual gravel parking lot, correct?
I don't believe so.
The basin was designed, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, I think you were going to answer exactly what I was asking then, that, so it's not taking into account the gravel, existing gravel parking lot?
No, it's taking in, it's taking in the increased impervious, yeah, the site.
Yeah.
And, and parallel with this, we're working with the drain office, typically this wouldn't trigger drain office involvement, but because that, that's their drain behind it, they're reviewing this as well.
Could you repeat that, we had a trouble with our audio.
Sure. Because this site has the county drain through the back and the county drain easement, they will be reviewing this for engineering as well, as OHM.
How difficult would it be then to maybe even do a rain garden, something to at least provide detention for the, for the gravel parking area?
Well, we're pretty limited to area that's not in the floodplain back there, and the area that is, is very heavily treed. Ordinance and bureaus and the drain offices don't require it, and if we tried to force it, we'd be removing woods or going in the flood, which drain office won't allow.
Because it isn't doing any good in the floodplain.
I also, I would like to point out too, as John mentioned, this, this site went through administrative site plan approval about five years ago, prior to the standard bistro renovations to the Creekside while the gravel was existing, and at that time, no additional detention was deemed necessary for the site.
Okay, all right, would you mind putting up a site plan? And what I'm interested in is, can you talk a little bit about the containers, where the edge of the floodplain is, and it looks like the, and talk about, you know, the impact on the floodplain with the deck construction? The other thing I'm curious about is what's required as far as foundations anchoring and so forth for the containers, you know, how are those secured, you know, with wind and that kind of thing? A whole bunch of questions.
One second. Can you see my screen?
Yeah.
Zoom acted away, okay.
Yeah.
Zoom acted in a way I'm not used to, so I'm not sure if you can see what I'm seeing, but you see the site plan?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, I can talk to the locations of the things you've questioned, and Micah could address a little more about how the, the containers work and how they're set on the patio. So these boxes are the containers, and this one over here is the bar.
And does the bar have like water and?
Refrigeration.
Yes.
And then all of those things.
Electricity.
Yep, and electric, sanitary for the sinks, and waters, water service for the sinks and sanitary for the sinks as well. The floodplain, go ahead.
Okay, and so Doug, is that considered additional square footage then?
For the structures or the?
Yeah. It's in building square footage, accessory, okay. All right, so that's been accounted for, okay.
So the floodplain line we're talking about is roughly here.
Very good.
And then comes, lost a bit, it's somewhere in here. So the work in the floodplain is putting patio in this gravel area and a little bit of steps here, and then there's also a sanitary service that will pass through the floodplain as well. There's no nut fill or permanent structures in the floodplain, the only structural improvement is this little bit of steps and this patio down at the adjacent to the floodplain.
Yeah, so as you can see, there's, none of the containers don't affect the floodplain, those are either set on a gravel medium, compressed medium, or a slab, concrete slab, and they can be bolted or anchored, they are an engineered product, so they're considered structures as well. I'm sure that answered all of your questions, as you can see that we've cut the deck posts out of the floodplain, so those won't be an issue, John's pointing at those right now. The only portion of the deck is that little corner and that's cantilevered over and that's the actual deck surface. So we've been pretty careful to keep any structures, anything that is anchored, anything that's, you know, the only things that are in the floodplain are some large, a couple stone steps and some pavers adjacent to the building.
Okay, so the decks and the containers will all be permitted like accessory structures, basically, through the building department, right?
Correct, yeah, the deck, yes, the decks have a building permit, correct.
What about the containers?
They'll be on our submittal, I'm not sure how the township, the building department treats the containers, but particularly for the, the bar, we have, you know, mechanicals and utilities that are going into it, so those will be on there as well.
Yeah, I guess I'm just, my concern is that, you know, like, the containers, if they're not, if there isn't some sort of wind, what shall I say? Yeah, I mean, if there, there are certain wind requirements that you have to meet with buildings, and a container certainly could be subject to uplift and some of those things, and just, I, I'm just wondering if, I mean, we can't say that they have to get a building permit, but I would, you know, I, I just, I'm just concerned that we don't just put these down and not have some engineering associated with them.
I'm pretty sure the building department will look at these as structures.
Okay.
And you guys could, so what happens is when, usually when the planning commission makes conditions, township board will repeat those conditions so that they end up in the final approval. So if you guys wanted to make a condition that, you know, to ensure that these structures are reviewed by the county building department, I think that'd be appropriate condition, and then that would be brought, that'd probably be brought, you know, forward to the township board, they'd probably make the same condition, because usually their motions are copies of your motions, and go from there.
So you're concerned about the attachment of these?
Like, for instance, when you do, you know, like a mobile home or whatever, there's certain ties that you have to do, if you do a tent structure, you know, one of those, you know, camping glamper, whatever, tent structures and so forth, or, you know, they're, they're just things that have to get anchored, yeah.
Wind load.
Yeah, it's the wind load piece, yep. All right, any other questions or concerns?
I'm still, I think just hung up on the gravel parking area, it's, if this were paved, would they be required then to?
Yes.
Provide stormwater, because it's not paved.
Newly paved.
Newly paved, yes, yes.
Right, so that would require?
If it was new impervious surface, put it that way.
Okay, so if the engineer could talk a little bit about, you know, that gravel parking area and, you know, the drainage and why it would be hard to, I mean, what would you do if we said, okay, you can't have it as overflow, it needs to be restored to, you know, so it's green space or we need to have some structure drainage, what would, talk about the issues there? It also looks like it's very wide.
Yes, it's, it's the existing gravel lots that's there, if it had to be re-gravelled or worked onto it or new surface put on it, then it would be, it would have to come up to standards for that area. We'd probably have to clear some woods out here, would be really kind of the only place that's left outside the floodplain to do anything with that.
So you can see how it's like, so wide.
There's always the opportunity to do something that's subgrade, but, you know, I know there's an expensive involved with doing something that's, you know, below grade for in a tank or something like that, so. It just, this seems like the opportunity, like, it's compacted, I mean, I would assume, you said, I don't know how long it's been there for, but it sounds like this is, this is impervious surface in my mind, I mean, you say it's gravel, but if it's been there for 25 years, it's compacted down, so I, I feel like it is, you know, it's, it's an impervious surface and I'd like to get something out of it, you know, some, since it's extra parking, if we could find a way to at least provide, you know, first flush, you know, it doesn't have to be 100-year stormwater detention or something, just something that clears the first bit of rain that comes up off the surface.
Can you just talk a little bit about which way grade, you know, the, the flow, and can you kind of talk a little bit about it?
Sure. Generally, flow is pretty much sheet flows from east to west across the lot, kind of down here. As you get in here, it comes this way, generally from east to west toward the, toward the floodplain.
And you have an aerial, or we can pop up, yeah, I thought you had an aerial in your, or we have an aerial, not just.
Let me, um.
It's kind of hard to see if there's any way you could just get a bioswale, you know, at that end, not in detention, but just a bioswale to catch it, and, I don't know. Any thoughts on that?
If I could, talk a little bit about the use, you know, we really anticipate this being very, not needed often for parking, if you're familiar with the flows of restaurants and hospitality businesses, generally, our busiest times are on the weekends for a few hours. This site, from discussions with the previous tenants, owners, has not had much need of the overflow parking in the past, we do want to leave ourselves that option, but we're not seeing daily use out of it, you know, and with the seasonal nature of our exterior plants, we really see it as being only necessary to park cars there in very small portions of both days of the week and times on those actual days.
So, I guess this is the, the picture that we see, okay, this is next to a floodplain, we do have impervious service, we don't have any documentation that, that gravel lot was accounted for in, in any of the stormwater calculations. It isn't required to be, however, we have some leeway here because of it, us needing to give, I guess, some sort of approval for it to continue. It could continue, and the idea is that you, you are saying that it's, it's not used very often. The issue is it's very close to a creek, okay? There are, we know from the Huron River watershed issues, you know, that creek, we have a, you know, sedimentation, all of these issues that we're dealing with, and the Huron River Watership Council has, and we've been very, trying to be very sensitive to, it is a lot of the older developments that have already sort of inadequate, they don't meet current stormwater standards, and here we see an opportunity of perhaps improving a situation. So, I guess we're trying to get some feedback as to what would be possible and how might that situation get improved, because, I mean, stormwater is a big issue, it's going to be a bigger issue as we get larger and larger intense rainfalls, and, and so I guess we're sensitive to that. Thoughts from the petition?
I understand that, I again would point to the, the site plan that was done, I believe in 2016, 2017, that did include this and this gravel lot and was shown, and no additional detention was required at that time. We are providing and proposing the rain garden for the additional impervious that we're adding. You know, we, we're open to doing what we can to improve, but, you know, when we're getting into cutting trees to create additional retention, there's not areas outside of the floodplain where we can necessarily add a, you know, more rain garden very effectively. That brings up tree relocations, and so we're, we're a bit in the pickle, you know, we, we feel like we're, with, with the minimal usage, that it's kind of the, the same use that it's, it's had for, for many years across multiple businesses. So I, you know, we, we would hope we could move forward with our proposal.
Just this area that I traced, in fact, all the way to the creek, in that area.
Can you put your, your screen back up, I think we, we lost your screen.
Yeah, we lost your sharing.
Oh, you lost it?
Let's share it. Here we go.
In fact, that's not even quite, well, I'll flip back to the aerial. That entire area between the creek and that.
I think you have to share the aerial.
Yeah, I'm, it's like six steps to get.
Sorry.
This whole area is very heavily vegetated, I mean, there's a lot of filtering going on just with the vegetation in that area between this lot and the creek. And our tree is pretty much right up to the edge of that gravel, as well as up to the edge of our parking lot for most of that stretch, so you might end up with something by a lot for most of that stretch. So you might end up with something by removing a bunch of trees and vegetation, but you've got a natural filter existing as it sits and it's been there. I could go back through, you know, historical aerials and see how long, but that gravel's been there a very long time.
I can believe that the vegetation would be a help already, but that's ignoring the possibility of removing, say, the center of the gravel lot and reconfiguring its structure if we wanted them to, or if it was decided that it needed to be. So the lot itself could be reworked rather than cutting down trees.
That was my thought too, Commissioner.
But I'm not saying that, that I'm really on board with the need because we haven't addressed whether or not there's calculations that have been looked at in the past. They're alluding to it's been approved before, but we don't know that, as you pointed out. However, the vegetation is being helped. We're outside of the 66-foot setback from the creek. I believe they've got a dimensional line. It might be from the center of the creek, I can't tell, on one of their.
Oh, the distance from the creek?
Yes. And I know that there's, there's different zones that you are not to intrude on from flowing water. So they might already be far enough.
Yeah, can, John, can you, do you have a dimension from the edge of the gravel to the creek?
I do not, but I can.
A guesstimate?
Yeah, if you give me just a second. Do it a old school.
I don't know if there's a water plane setback as well, but I know that we have our ordinance to discuss.
Yeah, I don't think there is a.
Waterway setback.
The creek is about 240, 250 feet from the gravel.
So that's a lot of.
Yeah, there's a lot of undisturbed.
And vegetation and all of that. Yeah, okay.
It's about as well filtered as we could ask for. If we don't interrupt that slope.
I'm just curious, if it was five years ago, why, why didn't we have these administratively connected then? Why, why now in the site plan stage, like, well, as part of the approval, they have to connect the two lots? Why wasn't it done five years ago?
They didn't want to straddle the lots with the deck.
Yeah, I don't recall why it wasn't done, but I don't think at that review, we were necessarily looking at the gravel parking lot in any detail. I think it was, they did an addition on the build, small addition on the building.
Right.
So I, I would have to look back to look at the reviews, but it's, it'd be my recollection that we didn't really even get into that parking lot because it was existing and we didn't really talk about it, about the need for, at that time, it was a very small addition, small enough to go through administrative review on the existing building.
And ultimately, my concern is just, this, I don't know how long the parking lot's officially been there and been used, but if not now, when? I mean, we're never going to get detention for this stuff. And that's ultimately, if we grant this, that there never will be detention for this area.
What is that impervious surface that's straddling the lot joint, the parcel lines? It's.
I'm going to flip back to the site plan.
Yes.
Yeah.
Oh, you're asphalting it, something.
Yes.
So that is covering.
We're meeting.
The two parcels. And I took it to be that.
Can you see it now?
Yes.
Okay, so yeah, this is new asphalt, because for all the parking spots required for the restaurant, we're providing paved parking. So this was an addition of asphalt.
Right across the two lines, the line joining the two.
Correct. And that, that line will go away once prior to final approval, the lots will have to be combined.
So right there, I can see why they had to combine them.
Yes.
So whether or not the gravel ever was calculated for drainage purposes, I think we, we may. You didn't have enough setback on the creek is what I'm thinking, but I'm not the expert on it. I just know that it's.
Yeah, the 200 feet is.
Well, outside of the.
I'm just going back through aerials and it's, that parking lot's been there for a long time. It was there in 98.
Oh, yeah, I was just trying to do the same thing here.
Yeah.
Trying to get on the internet and see if I can get into County GIs.
That's where I am. Oh, jeez. I, it's hard, some of these, when it goes back to 90, it gets a little blurry.
I'm just looking at these contours here, and even in that 240 feet between the lot and the creek, there's some undulating, there's some localized low areas and things too, so that's, that's kind of holding it back as well.
Okay. Yeah, it, I'm seeing stuff back in, you know, 90, in the 90s, so it's, it has, it didn't get, yeah, it's.
Yeah, we haven't checked to see if it's silting the creek.
I mean, it, it's not anything that, it's, I don't even know when the original building was built. Not there in 66, so. 79, so, yeah, it's 84, I don't see it, kind of, so. That's pre. All right. Doesn't, all right, so.
No, I, I have a thought too, in this regard. So the applicant indicated, and maybe John or Stacy know the answer to this, but they indicated that this has to be reviewed by the County Water Resource Commission due to the location of the creek. One of that, because they're, they will also be weighing in on this issue, on this whole imperviousness and stormwater requirement.
Teresa's, Teresa's asked us to do a couple infiltration tests, so we're scheduling that now. And she's asking for a little bit more than what township was. She'd asked for first flush or infiltration for any added impervious, so that's not just the net difference, it ends up being about 6,000 square feet of impervious. So it'll, a little more than what's shown here, maybe actually three or four times more than what's shown here, will be treated or infiltrated. And ideally, we'll get good results and be able to do that right in the ground and under this patio. Not, not requiring storage, but infiltration or treatment.
Yeah, and even if you try and do something in the center of that parking lot, it's not, not much of it's going to flow there. You know, it's, it's.
Right.
And I agree, I don't want to deal with trees. The only, the only thing, I mean, I mean, you could lose some parking and turn it into infiltration or something like that, but I don't know.
Overflow parking.
What's that?
Overflow parking.
Right, right, right.
I wonder if the commission would be okay with the review, since this does require the Washington County Water Resources Commission's approval and the drain use permit, and they'll be, they'll be looking at the drainage as well, if that would suffice on their way in.
As long as they're directed to look at the gravel lot that exists.
Correct.
If they're looking at the additional, then they're, they're putting the same blinders on that we're being asked to do. It's been approved in the past, so therefore it's not being addressed now. That's what I would be worried about.
Correct.
Well, I'm, I'm thinking that this whole site probably didn't have stormwater.
No, I mean, that's, that's the policy of the township and the drain office is to provide the, what's required for new impervious areas and new development.
That's correct. That's what we've got to work on.
So that was why we were being asked, if you could, what would be possible, you know, if you needed to. And that's where, that's where we were headed, was, is there an easy solution if we have a problem? We don't even know we have a problem. But it won't.
Right, I think that the removal of the woods and doing something over there is, you know, if something was required, that's where it would be. I think, I think we all agree that that's probably not desired.
Well, I think the option to that is to, is to eliminate, bring it inboard, the perimeter, lose the perimeter overflow parking, gravel parking, and turn that into additional infiltration.
You see that point?
Right where that red arrow ends, before you drew the, this is where you'd have to take out trees. If you got rid of that row of parking and turned it into infiltration, you wouldn't have to impact the trees.
So there are alternatives.
And if that lot still looks wide enough, you maybe get, you know, could you get another row down the middle to make up for the, if you wanted the 34, was it 34 spaces? To maintain those 34, it's exactly what the commissioners are saying, is that row in exchange, maybe put another row down the middle, if it, if it fits, it looks fairly wide.
Quite fit down the middle, because you'd need the, you'd have to turn it into one way, maybe. You could probably do, I think, turn it into one way, but that's, gravel isn't striped and people park wherever they want to.
Right, you can't be that.
That's the issue, right?
Yeah, but, yeah, I don't want to see any trees taken down, of course, that's the option. It's, it's more of, what about on that western, that western edge there where the arrow's pointing?
Or, you know, would you be willing to lose eight or nine, whatever, spaces of overflow parking to, I, I mean, this is, this is a good environmental practice to, you know, improve the conditions of a site, even though it's not. And the only leverage we have is, eh, you know, we're not sure about the, you know, how much, how much overflow it actually is used for, even though you have the 72 for the restaurant, but you're also adding quite a bit of occupant space outside in this particular case.
Is that part of the calculation for parking the outside?
It's just based on the building, right? Or does it include the outside?
We showed a calculation, we showed sort of a conceptual calculation for the outdoor space. None of the, because we were basically, we were asked to when we met with the township early on. But the intent, as Micah mentioned, is that all three of these functions wouldn't be happening at the same time.
Yes, the, the lower level of the restaurant is, of the, the building is actually not in normal use. Let's say a banquet room is not open for regular occupancy, so we only have the upstairs.
So the calculations are based on the banquet room occupancy and the, and then the outdoor, so.
Excellent.
I mean, if you're wildly successful, okay, which would be cool. I, I mean, the other thing we could, we could do is, I don't know, I guess I'm a little uncomfortable in that, okay, it's been there a long time, to, it, it has been traditionally used for overflow. They are meeting the parking requirement, so technically it's viewed as overflow. I'd rather have overflow parking than an issue with parking on the, the road, right? Like, we've had issues with other places. You know, it, it's a stretch to mandate it. I'd love, I'd really love you guys to consider, you're, you're, you're doing a good chunk of work there, and, you know, to, to turn that parking area into some infiltration area, knowing that this site probably, I mean, if you did the calculations for the total impervious surface for the site, you'd, you'd see how deficient it is, I believe. And it would be a good neighbor thing to, and a good environmental practice, to be able to remove those parking spaces and add infiltration. I, I really, I don't feel like we can, I don't feel like we can mandate it, but boy, you know, we're coming up against some really significant challenges in the future with, with storms and rain events, and this would be considered a really good environmental and stormwater practice if you could do that.
Understood, thank you. I, I would like to also point out again, John mentioned briefly that Teresa over at the County Water Resources, we are going to, she is adding us add to the, what the county required for additional impervious. So that's the rain garden that we did have over here. Sorry, you can't see my cursor, but the, that proposed rain garden will be larger and, and will actually take more than what that, that impervious is. So it, it will have some more additional drainage and retention than the district county requirements for just those nine, the new spaces.
And when this, when this comes back from, for engineering, it'll have Washington County's input in it, and there will be more, hopefully infiltration, we find the right soils, but more stormwater treatment at least for the site.
Our concern, my concern would be that they wouldn't take into account the gravel drive, the parking area, because it's not being changed, so they wouldn't require you to add for that.
That's correct, but there's also a lot more existing vegetative buffer between that area and the creek and this area, where you get the, the parking lot oils and things from cars coming off the pavement will be collected and treated.
Can we ask them to bring that up?
What's that?
When that's adequate, when they present.
Well, I think that the issue is the county can't enforce something like that either. Yeah, that's the issue. Yeah. Yeah. So what they've said is, because they're adding to, you know, the impervious area, so they're trying to catch more of the parking lot, which, which is an improved, I mean, it, it is an improved situation there, for sure. So I guess I'd like to strong, a strong, ask them to consider additional, and I don't think we can, I feel like we can't mandate it.
No ordinance to follow that.
I would, I would say to strongly encourage the applicant to work with OHM and the Water Resources Commission to provide, you know, additional stormwater management where possible. And OHM is here, you know, Stacy will, she hasn't even reviewed this yet as far as detail engineering goes.
Okay. That, that seems fair. All right. After that debate. So I think we're ready for a motion. Did you have anything else, Commissioner Shaba? Wanted to ask. All right. So let me just, I want to just check. Yeah, we took care of any of Jackie's concerns. Okay. So Commissioner Hyde, are you up for making another motion?
I can, I can, but I would ask for assistance when I come to the key points. But the basic motion I would make, referencing Site Plan 22006 Sam Hill Restaurant, the outdoor entertainment area. Based on the information received from the applicant and reflected in the minutes of this meeting, the planning commission finds that the site plan meets the criteria for site plan approval pursuant to Section 36180 of the zoning ordinance and recommends approval. This is based on the following conditions. The concerns noted in the Township Planner's Review dated 5/4/2022, May 4, 2022, concerns of the Township Engineers Review dated April 28, 2022, and that the properties be combined prior to final approval, that the permits be, I don't know whether we need to spell all this.
Final approval or construction, prior to construction?
I think it was listed as before. I think it was listed as before final approval.
We're talking about a combination of lots?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, prior to construction.
Okay.
Because if for some reason the township board was to deny it, then they have combined lot that they don't necessarily want.
Do we need to mention that the permits need to be applied for for the floodplain?
Yeah.
Yep.
Construction?
Permits applied for for deck and container structures.
Okay, thank you. That the temporary that the parking on the gravel lot be temporary for overflow parking only. These are the kind of things that I know that some of this is in the planner's letter, but I wanted to mention those. And I think Commissioner Culbertson that you wanted it specifically stated that the containers, somehow we need to word it that the containers meet the building standards for proper attachments.
I think if they that that you covered that in the fourth one, that it be that the decks and container structures be permitted.
Okay.
Yeah, that that covers that.
Actually, I was referring to the actual encroachment into the floodplain needing to have a permit.
Oh, that was the the Eagle permit.
Yes.
Which is which is really, I think, covered in the in the in the Township Planners and Engineers notes. So I think we could say that a building permit should be applied for for the decks and the container.
Thank you, yes.
Okay, that'll cover it.
And then however we word this, that we strongly request that additional calculations be done for stormwater management to account for the gravel parking area, even though it's not new construction, but we would really like.
I think it was we strongly encourage the applicant to work with the the O H M on maximizing.
Stormwater retention.
Yeah, or just why don't we say improving stormwater management for the existing site, the site plan, just the overall the the existing site, yeah. So, you know, it's they may be able to make that rain garden larger and take care of more of the building stuff as opposed to the gravel. It's it's what we want to do is somehow improve.
Recognizing that it may not have met current standards.
When it was originally permitted, there weren't stormwater standards.
You guys can understand, we're just trying to make sure that it maximizes the potential for eliminating a problem in the future.
So we strongly encourage the applicant to work with O H M on improving stormwater management for the site.
Thank you.
Okay, all right. Is there a second? Commissioner Sharma supported the motion. Then any other discussion? All right, we'll have a roll call vote. I can remember my scribbles will be in good shape.
Plus a report.
What's that?
Transcription will help.
Yeah.
Okay, Commissioner Hyde?
Yes.
Commissioner Sharma?
Yes.
Commissioner Chang? Yes. Commissioner Culbertson?
Yes. And and thank you for thinking about those things.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. We have no unfinished business, so we'll move to reports. O H M?
We have nothing to report.
Okay, Carla Wharton?
Nothing to report in this part of the in this part of the reports. But when we get to the zoning ordinance amendment committee, I'll say a few words on that.
Okay. Chair report. Let's see, the Environmental Task Force is working with the C students on the communications plan they presented in the last planning commission meeting. And also exciting, they we got a twenty-five thousand dollar Eagle grant. We got the approval today. And that'll be working on replacing the our fluorescent lighting throughout the older part of this building and also looking at electrification of three of the HVAC units that are in going to be needing replacements soon and looking at improving the efficiency of the HVAC system. So that's good news. And let's go to Board of Trustees. Let me open. Let's see, okay, so. They approved the preliminary P U D plans for Heritage Woods. Let's see, although they heard, you know, the continuing concern about easement issues raised by Mr. Spicer, approved a revised preliminary site plan for Woodview, tabled the proposal for the creating an I D D development district for the Opta Flow site. And which allows them, there's a tax abatement that is can be applied for if you doesn't make something an industrial development district. Approved place placing on the November twenty twenty-two ballot to renew and restore the open space millage. And approved Vestergard as the conservation farm buyer for the Rens farm. And also appointed retired tax assessor Jim Murtey to be the interim township administrator following the resignation of David Rowley. And then she also reported that she did check with the township attorney and saying that according to the B O T rules of order passed in February second seventh, states in part that attendance via remote participation will be available for all township board meetings. However, if remote participation is unavailable because of technical difficulties, the township may proceed with any meeting lawfully noticed under the Open Meetings Act. And I don't know if that we want to have any discussion on that. One of the things that I thought, just because we have consultants that come in remotely, we also have presenters, applicants that that if everyone could bring the laptops, we could actually conduct the meeting, we could turn off the set. And if Doug also has a laptop, we could all join the Zoom meetings. And if we muted ourselves and only the person that was talking, we wouldn't get the feedback from the system. So I think we have a way of we're still in person, but we're also conducting it via Zoom. So that would be my preference for if we run into technical difficulties again. If everybody has laptops, we just turn off the system and do Zoom in in the room.
Yeah, we did run into the audio issue, but we might have been able to solve that if we.
I think if one person at a time is speaking and you unmute, it makes you be real polite. That would be my preferred option, if that is sort of a consensus of the group. But if we do have whatever issues, we do have that option if we want to fall back on it. Okay, L P C, the Rens farm deal will hopefully close by the end of the month. And that's at the corner of Liberty Wagner to be used for future fire station and water infrastructure. And it's the first use of the township's bi-protect cell policy, which will offer a new way to protect agricultural land. So that was her report. Z B A has not met. And D D A, we still need to get some our representative there. Commissioner Sharma, anything from the Row Commission Advisory Committee?
Uh, no.
No, okay. Z O A? Chris or Doug, Doug, you wanted to?
We did meet on the fifth of May and we continued our discussions with the P U D regulation amendments. I think if my notes are correct, we're going to, you know, add new more specific public benefits to the to the P U D. That's what we're working on now.
Okay, do you want to go ahead and do T A F while you're?
There's nothing to report on T A F. We didn't have a quorum at the last meeting, so nothing to report, unfortunately.
All right, then Parks and Rec and Huron River Watership Council.
Parks and Rec, at our last meeting on the third, we talked about the entrances to Van Curler Preserve. We're looking at both the northern access and the southern access. And that's still ongoing discussions. We also talked about Marshall Park improvements. So we're getting ready and you may have seen some construction as you drove by on Zebra. You might have seen the structures that are going up. We've got some pavilions going in, ran into some issues as they were doing it and had to make some changes on the fly, but that's ongoing. I guess the Mercero properties that are along Marshall Road, there is being combined with another property that was donated that's adjoining that will add to the the existing Mercero, what we were calling Mercero. It'll have to be renamed because the new properties that were donated had a restriction on the naming. They want it named after the person who's donating it. So there'll be a name change, but it'll add parking. So we'll be able to access it off of Marshall Road Park and then walk the two separate, well, joined properties that'll become one larger property. So that is adding more preservation to the to the township all the time. It's great. Huron River Watership Council, I have no update for that.
All right, so you know what? I forgot the possible action three, which was the climate emergency declaration. Do you want to talk briefly about that? It's basically to give people a little bit of an orientation.
I thought maybe you might not have maybe it was on purpose, so.
No, it was not purpose, it was just jumping.
Two of our members that were very interested in hearing this. But just to let everybody know, Jane put this on the agenda so that we could inform people that the the task force is looking at developing an emergency declaration, a climate emergency declaration that, if I go back to my notes, we don't quite have the whole structure set up. But what was put into the minutes, I'm sorry, into the agenda packet, you'll see some of the the goals that are being set, some of the whereas clauses that we want to include. We haven't got them all ironed out yet. And it will, we are not quite sure at this point how we're going to word the declaration, whether it will be declaring any climate emergency and this is what we want to do about it, or we'll be saying that we're approaching an emergency situation. And whatever we recommend will be coming to the planning commission to review. And the planning commission then will make a recommendation to the Board of Trustees, who will actually do the declaration. Is that how it will be going on? Or are we still considering that the planning commission might?
I think it has to do I think it has to be a recommendation because we can't.
Of the political body.
Right, right. And so I think that I think if you look at the whereas clauses, I just wanted part of it is to get some feedback on one, you know, the and this is probably called from a lot of them, reference back to the Paris Agreement, the current I P C C report, which says we're really not making adequate progress and need to really pick up the pace. Looking at the hazards that we see from climate change in our specific area. You know, also bringing in the idea of the extinction of a lot of species that are starting to happen. You know, state the goals so far, you know, we have there's been an executive order by President Biden that sets up some building standards to combat climate change or reduce greenhouse gas emissions. My Healthy Climate Plan has been passed from at the state level with some specific goals as well. The county has their goals. And one of the specific feedback that we want to get is whether or not we want to align our goals with the county goals, which are their county goals are operations, carbon neutrality by twenty thirty, and then community-wide carbon neutrality by twenty thirty-five, which is a little bit different than Ann Arbor's. Ann Arbor's is everybody by twenty thirty. The the state is at a twenty fifty, which was the original kind of climate neutrality goal of the Paris Climate Agreement before the latest some of the later I P C C reports have come out saying we haven't made adequate progress. So some of that is, you know, what kind of goals do we want in the resolution clauses? And do we and do we want to align with the county's efforts and goals? So I don't know if there's feedback from this group on that.
I have a specific question that for you, Commissioner Culbertson, is will our goals be definitized in ordinances? Or in any, we're going to the master plan so that we could rely on that when we make decisions about, I don't know, impervious surfaces. That would certainly if we were trying to protect the tree, we're trying to protect the watershed, we're trying, we might have more than just our ordinances to lay back on. We could hold out specifics.
I think there's some things that definitely we can start adding. And we have a list of those things, you know, to start adding to our ordinances. We certainly can, especially in our the P U Ds and so forth. It's it 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 also depends what happens with the update for the energy code for buildings, whether there'll be another opportunity to require new buildings to come in with either onsite or a combination of onsite, offsite renewable energy. So but it would give us definitely then purpose. The other thing it would do is the township purchasing, all sorts of things. Everything would be looked at through a kind of a climate lens with with a declaration like this. So you'd have another kind of metric that you look at as you're making your decisions.
So the declaration is just that. It's stating what we're trying to achieve. And how we achieve it is up to us to define.
And that would be more part of than some of the issues of that the Environmental Task Force would be recommending as as policy changes or even designating. Right now, we have no one whose designated role is to implement, you know, a climate action plan or any of that. So, yeah, it's sort of the beginning of, yeah, this is important. It needs to be a part of the township's decision-making.
But I mean, those exactly the kind of question we would be asking, example, Pickleball or the restaurant we just talked to about what are they doing? But the question then becomes what is there from, you mentioned three, four things, Biden, county, state level? What are some of the provisions from there that need to be incorporated in our provisions so that we can at these meetings tell these stakeholders that we're talking to about the provisions that need to be met in what? about the provisions that need to be met in whatever fashion or form in their construction? Am I?
Yeah, the, the resolution can't, can't, doesn't give us authority to do that. It gives us then authority to change the ordinances and, and work on, you know, educating and community engagement around more climate action. It, it could be, I mean, Ann Arbor's, you know, putting up a climate action millage to pay for, you know, some of the things that need to be done in, you know, as a response to the climate and resilience and so forth. So it does open up different avenues and, and like I said, puts it as a major decision-making process, part of the decision-making process.
So it strikes me that the firmer we state the need to take action, the easier it will be to incorporate changes that need to be done to meet those means.
Yeah, so the strongest one would be the declaration of an emergency as opposed to just a declaration of goal, of resolving to meet goals. Because emergency implies urgency. So hopefully, I think that, all right, and then I forgot. As a part of my report, I just, I wanted to say that we don't have any business next week. I know Commissioner Hyde won't be able to attend. I also believe Commissioner Moore can't attend. So if we have no business, I was thinking we could do, I could get someone to do some continuing education, but with not enough attendance, I'd prefer just to.
Wait.
Wait, yeah. All right.
I also missed something that I wanted to state as part of the parks.
Yes.
We're still, we're still recommending to the Board of Trustees, the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board is recommending that they hire a parks manager, a full-time manager, because there's so much work that needs to be coordinated between the different preserves, the different parks. It just, it begs for an overall manager and a portion. So I'd just like to reiterate that.
Do they have any interest in sustainability plans?
Invasive species?
No, I just mean, I mean, a hire that, could that person also look at the larger sustainability issue as part of their job description?
Yeah, the job description has already been developed and proposed, we certainly can revise it. I think that makes a good, that's a good.
Because if we're looking for someone, that would also make, make it a very, I don't know, attractive a position to, yeah, okay. All right, then we have our minutes of the 411 meeting and. And our 59 meeting. We'll take the 411 meeting, yeah. And I forgot to.
Well, I would move that we approve the minutes of the, is it the 411? Yes, the 411 meeting minutes?
Any, is there a second? It moved by Commissioner Hyde and seconded by Commissioner Sharma. We approve the minutes as drafted. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Then we have our, why don't we take the next two together? The one is the.
No.
The no meeting, which is 425, and then the 59 meeting, which we cut short. So do I have a?
I would move that we approve both sides.
The 425 meeting and the 59, is there support? Support by Commissioner Sharma. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, then the meeting minutes, both the 425 and 509 have been approved. All right, is there anything else that wants to come before the Planning Commission? And with that, I'll take a motion to adjourn. Commissioner Hyde, support. Commissioner Sharma, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We are adjourned at 8:58.